I think sometimes board dots get a little wonky.
Anyone else wants to go around? I'm not sure that we're the delighted heads of the debate. Okay. It is Monday, July 1st, 6:02. I will call our meeting to order. Roll call. Joel?
Here.
Yes, here. Adam?
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
Tom?
Here.
I am here and, ooh, Carly?
I haven't heard anything from her, so I wonder if she's just in... In progress. I can text her.
If you don't mind, we'll give her just a second. She should be here. All right, well, while we are waiting for Carly, Dr. Slane, has our meeting been properly...
Yes.
Please join in. What do you need to do?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Someone like to make the message.
I could read that. Get my glasses on. The Mott Borbury School District, in partnership with the community, is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfill members of society.
Thank you, Adam. Number two, approval of our agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion? Second? Second. Motion by Leah, seconded by Joel, to approve our agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? B, approval of our June 17th, 2024 Board Regular Meeting Minutes. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I don't know.
I'll second that.
Motion by Sarah, seconded by Adam, to approve our June 17th Board Regular Meeting Minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And approval of our June 17th Board Workshop Meeting Minutes. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Joel, to approve our June 17th Board Workshop Meeting Minutes. All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Moving on to addressing the board. Dr. Snareau, any school news to share?
A little bit. We're getting ready for our second summer school session, which begins next week already. Had a very successful first session, and that's compliments to everybody who really rolled up their sleeves and met the needs of our kids. Unfortunately, we couldn't do our popsicle in the park on Friday because of the inclement weather, but we'll get that rescheduled. And another opportunity for the community to convene in fellowship will happen on July the 17th at 5:30 PM on the back portico of the high school. Have a barbecue and just enjoy each other's company. If you can be there, that'd be great. If not, we recognize also that's a busy time for people as they're enjoying their summer breaks. I think we're RSVPing by July 15th, if I remember right.
Correct.
Yeah. And then lastly, I want to commend a number of students who are organizing pre-cancer screenings that will be taking place here over the course of the next year. In fact, what they're trying to do right now is gather some fundraising to help offset the cost of it. It's through an outfit called Z-I-R-O, as in zero cancer. And this is being led by a number of our faculty and staff, so tip of the hat to them for their service-oriented spirit. We'll be sure to provide additional information to the board as it becomes available. But a great first start. July 17th is going to be a really special night. Excuse me, July 11th will be a very special night for people who want to help contribute to this important cause.
Any board members have any school news to share?
Awesome.
Do you have any? No, no school news? All righty. Any citizens comments?
Didn't see anyone tonight.
Then number four, personnel transactions.
They're tonight board members.
Motion to approve of the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Sarah, to approve our personnel transactions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Moving on to our consent agenda. Would anyone like to discuss either of our two items? And Dr. Snareau, do you want to?
Yes, just briefly. I wanted to make note to especially our newest board members, but as a reminder to our returning board members, each year, the school district must enter into an agreement with the WIAA. And that's what you see here before you tonight under the consent agenda. Thank you.
Sorry. It's okay.
To approve consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Joel and seconded by Leah to approve our consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number six, discussion items, our committee member reports. Scott, do you want to talk about BGT?
I don't have anything new to share. You did receive your update. Thanks, everybody, for keeping up with everything. Billings are great.
Joel, do you have anything to share with me?
The last time we met was June 10th, and then everything came to the board. Not next board meeting, so I have nothing else new to add. It was the budget revisions and the technology pieces that we looked up. So, review the budget calendar. If you have any financial questions, this is the time of year to make sure you go pester Scott and his team because they're not busy with the audit. No, it's, uh, the audit is shortly starting, I would assume?
Yep.
Yep, so, um, but yeah.
Adam, Village Park Center?
There was no meeting. So, no work.
All right, cruise to that one. All right, Aubrey, would you like to come up and talk about the community survey?
I'm glad you're here. Let's do it. Okay, prepared a little presentation for you to showcase what I've been doing for the past month or so. I do other things, but heavily in my support surveys. And, all right, so let's get started. Just a quick overview. So, my goal is, or our goal, is to understand and support students, family, and staff needs in light of May 1st. Our methods were to create two surveys to address needs based on Department of Education recommendations. And then second method, we use those results to identify for grants, which is fantastic because we get some great alliances formed in the meantime. So, if we go to the next one. I just included this slide as a reminder to us all that support goes both ways. We are privileged to support others, so staff, families, and students. But we also receive support, which is fantastic. So, this is just a quote from one of our support surveys. A huge thank you for having all the precautions in place to keep us all safe. And the photo is from Agape, which gave me a smile. Those are the T-shirts that were donated to our class from an anonymous donor. And the T-shirts were given to all staff and all students, which was fantastic. All right. Glad I made you smile, too. Support surveys, so they looked like this. We surveyed one, our staff, and then we also surveyed families regarding their needs, student needs, and resources they'd likely use. So, I just wanted to call attention to a couple of questions that we had asked, and this includes some graphic images of the data that we collected. So, first question for staff. What additional training do you believe needs consideration during August's pre-plan week? That included trauma-informed care, self-care wellness for staff, speak-up-speak-out training, brain-based best practices. So, brain-based means teaching methods and lesson plans that are based on scientific research about how the brain learns. I didn't originally know that stuff, but I defined it. And then safety procedures and mindfulness training for educators. So, that's a good overview of what folks want to learn more about. Next, still in the staff survey. Due to the May 1st event, how are your students' social and emotional wellbeing? So, I'd like to point out that there's no orange on this pot-tart, which would mean that most are struggling or that staff member identified that most students are struggling. In reality, they say that there is either a mix of students who are okay and students who are struggling and students who are responsible. And just a reminder to us all that trauma and trauma recovery presents in different ways. It's not static or straight-line. It has peaks and valleys. So, while we might have had these results about mid-May, we might see different results towards the beginning of the school year, and that's perfectly okay and normal for trauma. So, just keep that in mind.
Aubrey, do you think there's...
Yes.
I mean, probably there is, but just in your opinion, do you think from this graph and the percentages could have to do with which building?
It could, definitely, yeah. So, in our data collection, we asked which building that they worked at.
Okay.
And so, we're able to pick apart.
Oh, you're okay.
Yeah. And so, one of the things that we did after we originally reviewed off the data is we picked apart based on school. And so, we gave that information to the individual principals for their review.
Okay.
Good question. I wasn't going to wait last, but as long as we started it. So, there's only 77 responses. Are the majority from one particular school or is it spread across or... Good question. Spread across, but they are from, there are quite a few from the same school. Nope. That's what I would have guessed. I actually wanted to make it up. Any other questions? Cool. Next. Are you interested in receiving support services that you're currently not getting? So, folks, those 77 respondents said counseling, opportunities to gather with peers, staff professional development. And you'll notice that 55% of respondents said nothing is needed at that time, in which case, I'll refer you back to my previous statement that trauma and trauma recovery, not stagnant. This could change over time. But that's great to know that they don't necessarily need anything at this time, but that others might need some availability of supports. All right, moving on to the families. So, in our survey to families, if additional support continues to be available, would you or your student be likely to utilize it going into the 2024 to 2025 school year? So, a lot of things, 43% said yes, 56% said no. But again, this is great statistics for backing up why we're doing what we're doing in terms of supports. Because 43%, while the majority technically, is still a large chunk. All right. Are you interested in receiving support services that you and your students are not currently getting? Majority again said no. So, out of 274 respondents, 275% said nothing is needed at this time. But otherwise, some folks said that counseling and opportunities to gather with peers would be appreciated.
Hi, I have two things. Because as a parent, this was actually really hard to fill out. Because the first one, with three kids and three buildings, it would have been a different answer depending on which kid I was talking about.
Yep.
And then with this one, it was also hard to answer because two of my kids weren't speaking to counselors at the school at the time that the survey was given. So, my answer is nothing needed at this time because they are currently receiving, or they were at the time, but now there's not. So, because school's over. So, it was really hard to answer because I wasn't really sure what we were trying... Like, are we trying to get at what we wanted for '24, '25? Or are we wanting to write the second how things are going?
Aye.
So, just to throw those... I was like, maybe I should call someone. I was like, I'm already halfway concerned.
Would you... I'm curious, would you have wanted to take it three separate times or like multiple times?
Um, no, but yes.
Ooh.
Um, so for each kid, I would have... The two older ones, I would have answered different than the other one. Younger one didn't even remember that something happened.
But I would also say, just in experience with surveys, sometimes even getting somebody to take it once is, I mean, so you've got a...
Yeah. It is a hard...
Right.
It's a hard thing to do, but the answer would have been different depending on which one.
For each, yeah.
For each kid.
That's a good point.
We do a lot of things where we assume, I think everyone has one kid in the district, and then I go to answer stuff. I'm like, uh, at one point, I had four kids in four buildings. I don't know how to answer any of these questions.
Good point. Thank you. I'll consider that for the next survey. Okay. Next. Last, but not least, we have one more. Would you and your family be interested in participating in support activities planned by the district during the following times of year? Select all that apply. Majority of folks said that they'd love to participate, or at least like to participate in the 2024 to 2025 school year activities. And about half said that they'd like to participate in the summer activities, which is fantastic for a barbecue. Can't wait. There should be, spoilers, therapy dogs coming. Some celebrity guests. All right, so getting into grants, where I spend the majority of my time. We've applied to the, or for the Project School Emergency Response to Violence, or the SERV grant for short, provided by the Department of Education. Second grant is the School Safety Initiative Critical Incident Stabilization Funds, provided by the Office of School Safety and Department of Justice. And then we have the Stop School Violence Program, last but not least, provided by the Bureau of Justice Assistance. Not false. All right, let's get into what those entail. So, the first one, the Project School Emergency Response to Violence Grant. So, that one, we applied for a counselor and a social worker, so two positions. That would be about a year's time for their contract. And counselor in particular, that would be technically a reimbursement, excuse me. Counselor is a reimbursement for what Erin kindly helped provide in the weeks in the aftermath of the event. And then the school social worker, that's the one that has the year contract. So, school social workers, can't say enough for how much they do for us. And to have one more on our staff would be phenomenal. And we also asked for trauma-informed educational literature for all staffs to aid in their recovery. And so, specifically, it is From Behaving to Belonging, The Inclusive Art of Supporting Students Who Challenge Us, which is a fantastic book, easy read, for all staff who would like to participate. We recognize that we don't want to cause anyone a wrong work, so it would not take away from what they're doing or ask them to do access work. We'd give them the time to either read the book or just join a kind of like a book club, per se, where we would give them an overview of suggested supports in the book, so that they have something to talk about with their peers because that's important, too. Even if you don't have time to read necessarily, if you have time to, or we give you the time to really soak in strategies that are suggested for after-crisis or behavior and belonging, et cetera. And this book specifically relates back to what we heard in the staff support survey that we sent out, which is fantastic. Awesome. How did you pick that book? Great question. Okay, so I did a bunch of research on it, and then I went to our fantastic Brian, and I said, okay, what do you suggest? I am clearly not the expert in this realm, but I did a lot of research, and I'd love your opinion. So, Brian had actually went to the authors, our Dr. Julie Caston and Kate McCloud. And so, Brian had went to one of their seminars, and he had really enjoyed what they had to say and thought they were very knowledgeable, very engaging. And so, we decided on them.
Nice conversation with the authors as well.
Yeah. Yeah, it was fantastic. And also baked into this, the author, Julie Caston, Dr. Julie Caston, to count and speak to staff via virtual communication. So, that'll be fantastic. They also have, in that package, they have a bunch of take homes and one-pagers that folks can easily access and utilize day-to-day. So, that's a great tool.
Is there an audiobook version available for staff, too?
That is such a great question. There is not currently. However, we had, this is an idea. We have a...
Aubrey's going to read it.
Part, so we'll take out particular, possibly take out particular paragraphs that we really love, and we'll narrate them and put it all together into...
You know, for me, I don't know when I read a book last. It's all audiobooks when I'm, you know, distracted.
Yeah, I agree.
It's a quick read. I read it in two nights. It's one of those, it's very easy. It's not very theological. It's actually very practical. And I think that's what's really going to make our staff enjoy it. Actually, we don't want to make it mandatory, but it can be done in two nights.
I'm sure teachers, like, probably read more than they read.
Driving around with stuff.
Yeah, it's just a thought, you know? Make it easier.
It all sounds fantastic. Contingent on actually giving the grant. Exactly. Though, yeah. Right. Agreed. Is the timeline, or the timeline for notification? I'm so glad that you asked. There's no particular timeline for this one, funnily enough. But I have heard from the person who would have used them, and they said they hoped to get a response last week, but most likely it'll be this. Oh, good. Yeah. So, a lot of my answers are gross. Either they'll come back with comments/edits or they'll come back with a script.
Project SERV is for the very purpose of school districts that have been in this crisis and kind of take away the red tape that's involved in a lot of grants. And so, we've been told that by studying what other school districts you've all been, Sandy Hook and others have done, and implementing that into our own narrative that we should not foresee an issue with funding for these projects.
Yeah, and what was phenomenal about this grant was that we had access to the Department of Education, specifically a Dr. Renee. And she reviewed our application, which is fantastic. And she said, okay, you need to do this, remove this, add this. And so, it was just a great collaborative process. So, we're more so guaranteed with point-nudge-nudge that we be afforded our requests. In terms of the total, we requested 118,000. So, we'll see. We were told maximum range would likely be 120,000. So, we'll see how it goes. Hopefully, you do get it. Yes. I'm sure you stumbled across this in all your research, but the DPI has a lot of information about trauma sensitive schools. If for some reason, you have to go with a more free option... That's a brilliant idea. But hopefully, it'll... But the free option is always... All right. Any questions about that grant? Okay. Moving on to the School Safety Initiative Critical Incident Stabilization Funds by the Office of School Safety and Department of Justice. The requested items include a partial PA system replacement for the middle school. So, just an FYI, the, some of the PA system is about 30 years old, which is a pretty old system in terms of tech. And so, we're looking to replace some of it. It performed decently on data, but it could have performed better. And so, we look to improve that system. Based on my discussions with Trish and Jacob, it sounds promising that this item would be approved. Trish and Jacob are from the Office of School Safety. And then second item, two security fobs, about 8,000 total, which would further strengthen our access control measures. Specifically, these would be for doors 13 and 11 by the window on the back side. Just for your edification, these two items, while they're not identified on these surveys, they were identified by middle school administration for items that they'd like to see replaced in their debrief. So, at least we have somewhere that we're taking this information from. It's not really nearly, it's based on what the folks who actually use this building and actually use the items in this building have seen as things that they need. All right, and last but not least, just an FYI, Custom Canine Service Dog Academy has generously offered to donate a fully-trained service dog to us, which is huge. The cost for that, just so that you're aware, is about $25,000 in value, which is giant. The organization is currently working with Dane County Emergency Management Team, so we've seen them here, to ensure future victims of traumas have access to their service dogs as we did in the days afterwards. And the service dogs we will receive will be trained to specifically support if we decide to continue, who would support students and staff in PTSD specifically, behavioral intervention, and insight, which is, that's a lot of training. That's about a year and a half, so they say. So, huge benefits. And I know that based on the surveys as well as social media post-engagement, folks really enjoyed the dogs that came here to help out in the aftermath, which is fantastic. And I know there was a buzz in the administration as well about wanting a dog. So, that's just fantastic to know that we have the backing and the need for that dog. But the dog have to live with someone like that? It would. Am I allowed to say more?
What we do have a number of people who live on...
Anyway, I suppose it wasn't a problem. I just wanted to make sure. The problem and the handlers have also been volunteered as tributes. Amazing.
And the expenses related to that, all covered?
All covered.
That's all part of this grant?
Yes, exactly. So, as part of the grant, I requested startup funds for the first year to bring about $10,000. And I've used a bunch of resources online to itemize exactly what that entails. I can give you a little overview. I won't give you the complete list because that would be a lot, but it includes like food, their initial shots, if they don't have those already, all three beds that they'll leave because they'll need beds here and then also at the individual's home that will hold the dog. And then food bowls for each of those locations as well. So, pretty well thought out.
Temporary costs are also included in perpetuity, though?
Not...
We think, well, not through the grant, but we think we've got coverage through this outfit, who's donating it.
Got it.
Yeah. So, the grant will cover it perpetually, just the first year.
I'll also note that we took a lot of time to go back to other school districts, like Portage, for example, to ask, okay, how does this work in your neck of the woods? Or what are the documents that you use are the documents that you use to identify which students are not able to be near the dog, what do you do in terms of insurance, and how much does that cost, and what is the insurance cost for handlers in particular, and how, is your insurance concerned about your use of therapy dogs? The answer was no for all the school districts that we polled, but you know, it's good, it's good to know, because that is a concern.
Steven and Akita? No. I'm just kidding, they're my only dog.
That's a great question, actually, because we asked.
I'm sure there's breeds that are.
Yeah. So the one that they suggested for us is a golden retriever, because they don't mind head pats as much, or being touched repeatedly in the head, so, good to know.
This animal will make rounds to all buildings?
Great question. It would go with the counselor who has raised their hand to be a handler, and so whenever it's needed, it would be going to those particular buildings. Specifically, we're thinking the high school and the middle school in particular, but it could make the rounds to other schools as well.
This is so much better than a dolphin puppet.
Was that an option?
Only I remember the dolphin. Do so with all of them. Do so, that's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
The, you mentioned the key fob thing replacements?
Yes.
So, there's, there's none, so.
Yeah, on 11 and 13.
Okay.
Yeah, which means people would be able to.
Yeah.
Cool, any other questions about this one? Okay, moving on, last but not least, so this one is actually kinda, I think of it as a extended version of the SERVE grant, so the Stop School Violence Grant is really for three years, usually applicants request for three years. And so, this one covers a social worker, social worker interns, behavioral specialist, and then continuity, or continuous safety behavioral and belonging care training and literature. So, the university additions include the social worker and the behavioral specialist. Those are fantastic resources. I worked with the UW to identify and apply for social worker interns if we had the grant, made sure to stipulate that in my request, that this is grant dependent. And then, the behavioral specialist would just be a fantastic addition to the team, and I worked very closely with Brian on this one to identify the need, and Erin and Scott to identify the costs of all of these items for each of the grants. So, I thank all of you guys, and Steve, for reviewing all of these, these are a lot, it's a lot to review. So, in particular, this one, the continuous safety, so it would still be this book for purchasing, we can purchase a couple other books as well to increase our library of trauma response and behavioral work that we'd be doing. And then, also, the cost for 12 staff, 12 of our behavioral staff to go to various functions and collaborations across the nation, just so that they're in the loop and understand any of the latest and greatest behavioral work that's going on. Yeah. Which is fantastic. Any questions? The total of requested funds is 835,000, which is lower than someone who wanted last year with a similar proposal. A school district in New York was kind enough to send me their actual proposal, which is fantastic. And then, the timeline is September of this year, so we should know by then. This one is less guaranteed, so the first two, we're probably gonna get them, but this last one is way more competitive, because it is a federal grant. Any questions about this one? Thank you, Aubrey. You've done a lot of work.
I especially appreciate how you've taken the results of the surveys we received from both our staff and our families, and woven in a response that meets the needs of our district and those that we proudly serve. So, a tip and a hat to you for your leadership in putting that team together, and then for seeing it through. We'll know about each of these interventions over the course of the upcoming school year, and to be sure when our staff returns on August 26th, 5th?
I don't know. Maybe, or 23rd?
23rd? They're coming in early August. But on August 27th, we've particularly set aside time for our staff to do just as they've asked us to do, which was to learn together as a group, and the fellowship, we have people coming from the Department of Education, from Washington DC, to actually lead us in some training around resiliency, we have the folks from the book, who will, and this is gonna be an opportunity for people to attend whatever or however many they want to of these events. We don't want to, we want, we found, I think, better success by just allowing things to be voluntary for staff, when things occurred two months ago today. And so, we wanna be very thoughtful about, people are different readiness levels, we'll continue to offer the supports for individual counseling, we'll continue to offer opportunities for people to connect with one another, because to your point, it's not linear, and we wanna do everything we can to meet people where they're at, as opposed to us trying to force a solution for them. So I'm pleased with the direction we're moving in, of course, we haven't got all the bases covered, and if people have suggestions, we wanna know about them, because we only wanna make it better for our staff. It's a delicate balance, quite frankly, for us to strike, starting the school year on a positive note, while at the same time trying to recognize that, you know, there's still some unfinished business in, I think particularly, our eighth grade children who are going up to the ninth grade, who are gonna be meeting with ninth grade staff, who had a very different experience than our eighth grade children did. Moreover, our seventh grade students who had a very different experience than our eighth grade staff, right? And so, trying to set the conditions for, for example, our eighth grade staff to understand that kids are gonna be saying things a little differently than maybe they're ready to hear, because of their lived experiences, and just trying to find that right balance of serving our kids and our families. I think we're on a good, we're on a good trajectory, thanks to your leadership. Thank you.
I have one more question. One of the staff areas of support they wanted was information on school safety, is that something that's gonna be, I'm sure that they have heard it at some point in time, obviously they do safety trainings, but I didn't hope it was just gonna be like an opportunity to, and I know I've heard Brian say before, they don't care what the plan is, as long as they know there is a plan, but I just wondered how we were gonna address that, because that was one of the top.
And that was, you're talking specifically staff, right?
Yeah, it said, um.
Did you read?
Nope, it was earlier, it was the same slide, yeah.
Yeah, very first. And that's a tricky one, and it is one that we are, we're meeting with the safety team before the school year starts, to kind of re, kind of assess where we're at with any building, we're also working with Trish on what are the guidelines? Before May's first event, we're gonna do a whole like hands-on, real hands-on training, and kinda go through that again, which we did a few years ago, and now we feel like we actually can't quite do that, and so what does training re-look like after you've gone through a trauma, because you know that you need it, but you also don't wanna re-traumatize?
Right.
And so, it's a, it's a delicate balance of those two areas, and one that we're gonna be walking very carefully, and hopefully we'll hit right.
Just giving people the option to do what they think is right for them, I think is really gonna be the key, rather than making the specific training mandatory at this point, just seems unseeable to me. If you don't mind me also offering an invitation to you all as board members, when we go to the WSB convention this year, we have put in an application, and I suspect would be selected for this, for a joint partner presentation with the Office of School Safety, and your voice will really be helpful, to the extent to which you're available and would like to help with that presentation. Asha, it's the third week of January this year, we'll talk more about the convention, but in the event that you're interested in helping participate in that presentation, I shared the link of that presentation, we should be hearing something by September, if you're available, we'd offer a great deal to that.
I'm assuming in terms of laying out the supports and seeing what they look like through the fall, not that you want to extend it, but I would think a calendar of events for staff would be very helpful, just to use them as their, you know, hey, maybe not this one, but there's one two weeks out.
Yeah, exactly, so for example, with the school book that we've selected, we'll probably be doing that three or four intervals throughout the year, and if people just wanna join us for a certain part, they certainly can, but at least everyone will have a copy of the book, and they can reference it.
One staff question.
Ooh, yes.
In terms of, you know, you've been doing the retros on this, the incident, everything like that, I didn't know how much any overlap there would have been, if those are more focused on kind of the physical events that happened that day, or if there is some crossover into areas of concern about, you know, students, teachers, that type of thing.
Tell me more, I'm.
So, we're still, we're still waiting on final report.
Yes.
Of the incident, I didn't know if you had been coached along, when you're talking through things, you know, reflecting on May 1st, if you've gotten some feedback, a drip of feedback to help inform any of the grants that we're putting in?
Thank you, sorry, I'm a little slow.
Yeah, no, no.
I was trying to connect. I was putting it all together, thanks. Yes, we in fact think that we will be getting the final report from the DOJ sometime before the end of July, at which time this will allow us an opportunity to fine tune whatever offerings we may have, not only for our staff, but our community as well. One of the pieces that I'd like to try to leverage the Department of Education, since they're already here on August 27th, is try to stick around that night to do something for our families too, because they're an important part of this healing, so much will depend upon what kinda comes out of that final report.
Yeah.
Dane County Emergency Management, Department of Justice, the Office of School Safety, local police department, we've met now probably on three or four different occasions to do this formalized debriefing, that coupled with the data we've received from our families and our staff, and just personal touches, touch points we've had with our staff have allowed us to kinda get a feel for how to shape the ask in the grant.
Yeah, cool.
Another note is that the Office of School Safety grant, so it's the critical incident one, you can submit multiple times, so as new information comes out, we can submit for additional doctors.
Are we also looping in the subs that were here that day, and like the student teachers, all that stuff, like they wanna read the book, and be part of the book club, or whatever that they can be?
Yeah, that's the goal, and I know that in the future, we're working on a list, or how to compile that list of subs best to contact them in the event of emergency.
Yeah, you're right. Not forgotten as heroes in our mind either.
We're looking at an insane amount, I feel like, that day than normal.
Yes. Let this not be the only conversation, so certainly if there's other ideas that come along, or just wonders, well, let's put it back on the agenda, but we just thought it would be important for the community, for the board, to hear the steps that are being taken.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, moving on, my internet has damaged, but I think the next up is Dr. Slarno, talking about our annual meeting.
The annual meeting is scheduled for August the 12th, and as you may recall, this is a meeting of our community, not necessarily a formal, a meeting of our Board of Education. Suffice to say, the board does play a prominent role in the carrying out of the annual meeting. As we do each year, we take some time just to reflect on the proposed agenda. As you know, there's really three big topics, resolutions if you will, for the board's, excuse me, for the community's consideration of the meeting, including a report from our very own treasurer, Joel Craven, who'll provide an oversight of our finances for the year. First is with regard to board salaries, and then, as you see, number eight is travel reimbursement expenses for the board, this covers two meetings at that, and then, an overview of the entire school budget, inclusive of what would be the third resolution, adopting a levy for 2425. As Joel referenced and Scott referenced earlier, we do not have a finance committee meeting next week, because we do have an audit that's upcoming, and therefore, we want to make certain that when the finance committee meets again on Tuesday, it's a Tuesday, not normally our Monday, Tuesday, July the 23rd at 4:30, we can kind of wrap that all up together in one discussion. So those of you on the finance committee, that might be a little bit longer of a night, thank you for noting that in your calendars, and of course, all board members are welcome to attend those finance committee meetings. And then, as we do each year, we wrap it up by identifying when the proposed meeting might be for 2025. This event takes place at 6:00 PM, and will occur at the intermediate center cafeteria. We've already have a legal counsel there, in order to help us with any questions that may arise about parliamentary procedures and the like, so not too much of a deviation, in fact, I don't think any deviation from prior years, but happy to answer any questions that the board may have on this. Thank you.
All right, moving on to our action items, Dr. Slarno, our 2425 academic standards?
Yes, our very own Sarah Straka and her beautiful family are out west, enjoying the heat, so I hope to do as good as she normally does on topics of this importance. This is a one-page overview of what would go to our families relative to the Board of Education's standards, educational standards. This was reviewed by the Education Committee back in June, and it is a requisite to be approved by Boards of Education all throughout the state during the board's first meeting of the fiscal year. One change that was born out of that conversation at the Education Committee had to do with referring to the English Language Arts Program, as opposed to, I'm sorry, I don't remember what was it there before, but as a result of that. There it was, yeah. One of our teachers suggested, hey, could we maybe change that, it was a really thoughtful suggestion, so, other than that, the standards are born out of the state standards, and then also the final work that our staff has done around identifying our key provisions within each of our content areas, we're just asking for the board's formal approval of that tonight, please, and thank you.
So, any reason why it's all more Wisconsin, it's all more Nashville?
Yes, because sometimes some of the Wisconsin standards aren't quite. Good question.
Any other questions? Do you want to make a motion?
Well, two, two seconds.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Carly, to approve the 2425 academic standards, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Brian, first reading board policy 453.4, administering medication studies.
Yes. If you had a chance to review this policy, you would notice that it's mostly red. It's gone through a lot of changes, it went through, it started with the red line, you know, the versions that the lawyers had, you know, just told us needed to be updated, we met with SAW, who went through the policy in itself, and then it had a whole nother lawyer review after that, specifically because we're changing the way that we operate in terms of, for sixth through 12th grade, that students can self-carry and self-administer, administer their own medication, as long as it's not a controlled substance. And so, with that provision, and allowing that to happen, requires then an additional, a lot of legal language, to make sure that we're not liable if that causes problems and concerns. And so, really, when you look at the first really three paragraphs, it's defining what we're meaning, and it's really directly stating that we're not responsible for anything that would occur due to this, this new policy. And then, when we do the admin reg, all of this language will be in there, so when parents sign the document, so you have a 10th grader who has a sinus infection, and you know, just wants to take it at noon, you know, take their medicine, they could, you're gonna sign, the parent can sign the document that says that there's no legal ramifications if that goes wrong for the board, for the school district. So, so that is, is the intent of the policy, kind of the change it around a little bit. Some questions that have come up, that have asked, is when it says like administration, like, we're gonna allow students to inject, like, why would we, you know, their own, and that's really when it comes down to like EpiPens, right, like, so kind of that emergency band policy, and that's why it's cross-referenced here as well, and so we would allow a student to carry their own EpiPen in sixth through 12th grade, in some of those, and that's only if, as the parent or guardian feels comfortable with them doing that, and fills out the form, gets, you know, the right people to all sign it, and then including the physician, that it's safe and legal and all of those things, there's a step process for this to happen, that'll be really clear, but it will give some students who may be doing this, you know, it puts some meat to it, too, so.
It's more of a process question, but the form that parents will fill out, is that gonna be kinda like the blue form for the bus, where it's a Google sheet that you can just go in and fill out, or is it gonna be something that gets printed and fill out, signed?
We've had some discussion around that, and we feel like, at least in the beginning, as we roll it out, that we will have it be hand signature, just because we really want somebody to actually know the, read through it, instead of just clicking buttons. And so, at least in the beginning, for the first few years, it'll be more hand, and then as this becomes just kind of routine, then we can have that conversation about it, we can digitalize it in the future.
So how procedurally, so, okay, I wanna send Tylenol to my. So how procedurally would that, so okay, I want to send Tylenol to my kid, I go online, I print out this form, I fill it out, I sign it, I send it magically, stick it somewhere at school.
It'll go through, everything will go through the school nurses through this. So it'll go directly to CJ, then CJ will, yeah, keep track of it.
How are we going to know? If my kid just busts out Tylenol, their teacher's not going to know if they have the form on file or not, so.
Yeah, I think that this is, you know, I mean, we're putting in the guidelines and the policies that we want students to follow, but again, if students, there's lots of opportunities for students to not follow the exact procedures and.
This one is hard to put on kids, though, because it's not really the kid's fault if their parents said, hey, take this school, the policy says you can do it. And don't run, I love that we're going to let sixth through 12th grade carry Tylenol in their backpack so I don't have to run from work to school and drop it on. But.
I hear you. I'm actually the person who's holding us up from doing something electronically. Here's my concern is, is that there's a lot, to your point, young people making these decisions on their own to self-administer, sixth graders at very different readiness levels based upon their social emotional awareness. I'm worried about kids dispensing medications without a pharmaceutical license, and that of course itself has implications for the district. And so wet signatures are important to me at this point. And eventually, once we get the systems up and going such that we can communicate to staff members that Lea Lipska's little guy is able to take a Tylenol, it might be on some kind of system internally, we haven't developed that yet. We didn't want to go down that road until we were certain that that met with the board's approval. So I apologize if people are wanting to kind of go electric and get it signed off on a Google form. I'm just wanting to protect the interests of the district a little bit more and that of the staff who would be responsible for overseeing it.
I'm going to play devil's advocate just a smidge.
Please.
So my kid could sign my name, my kid doesn't have access to my email. So if I'm electronically signing it from my email, they don't have access to that. But there's nothing saying unless you're going to make me notarize it and then, no. That there's nothing saying a kid's not going to sign it. But my kids, like my kids can access my email. So that's goals, bro.
I suppose, yeah.
Yeah, there's no foolproof way. We have to believe that we, 99.9% of our families and kids, they're not, it's not going to be an issue. You're right, we always have to think about that one-tenth of 1%, but we'll deal with those little dumplings on their own, and we'll focus on trying to do what's good and right for everybody else.
And are we going to ask for parent's signature and then the student's signature? Like they have to sign for like when they do a science lab, that they've read the instruct, because if you're going to make me print it out and fill it out anyway, I would like my kid to also take ownership that they understand that they are not supposed to give it to their friends. And that adds, if we're going, if we're worried about the extra layer adds it. I mean, it might just be with crayon and get it signed. My kids are always like, do I have to write it cursive? I'm like, however you sign my name, I'm just signing. I could blackletter it.
That's a great idea. I think if we were to get past this with the policy, most assuredly, we can start thinking about what's the proper procedure that isn't overly burdensome for our families but also meets the needs of protecting the interests of the student, the district, and the staff and sort of.
And if there's spots to fill out multiple medications on the same form, so I don't have to fill out 87 of them, one for Tylenol, one for ibuprofen, one for.
We're talking about that.
Yeah, one for.
We didn't think it would be, you could, in general, you could do likely one form, but you know, your kid's going to get sick and then have a new medication, then that would, that would be the additional forms that you'd need to fill out. But if you're on a pretty strict, this is what I do.
Or just the random stuff they carry, the Tums, the Pepto Bismol, the Tylenol, like if I'm going to have one form where I put just the basics that I know I'm going to throw in their backpack.
Right, over the counter.
The over the counter, like when they did the school trip, I'm like, I have to fill out one of the, okay, so he's got motion sickness meds, and then he's got Tylenol, and then he's got ibuprofen, and then he's got, I was like, here are my eight forms for the different meds, and they have to sign each one. I was like, it's crazy.
Maybe make it, we'll work on making that as more streamlined.
And writing the instructions that are already on the bottle that I'm required to provide is a step that's insane. It's already on the bottle.
I appreciate this policy, and I appreciate the thoughtfulness that is going into it. My daughter used to have EpiPen, and I would have preferred that she had it on her body with her. Like whenever she went out in the world, I was always worried that like something was going to happen or someone would forget it. And like if it was just in her backpack, that would have been, and she knew how to use it. Like we made her teach the siblings and everybody else how to do it, so.
Something like that time is a factor, too. Yeah, definitely. So is that where this policy shift is coming from, from parents asking for it? Or is this something we're seeing other districts doing?
I think a lot of other districts do it, and it's a, the reason the policy shift in terms of sub-medication is because our school nurses asked for it.
Okay.
So I think that they know that kids at the middle of high school are trained and ready to be able to do it.
One thing that we talked about previously at SAW that's not a part of this policy was the introduction of Narcan. You remember, Narcan is a system for students or individuals who may have taken an opioid and had adverse reaction to it. We would like to introduce Narcan as one of the tools in our emergency services for nursing. We feel like that doesn't quite fit into this policy, but rather, Safety and Wellness Committee will come back and review that on July 15th. So just a thought, bit of shift from what we talked about earlier.
That makes sense.
And then I had one very minor detail.
All right.
On page, I'm doing Leah's work. I think number eight could be moved up into paragraph six. Because it's, both of those paragraphs.
They could be combined.
Yeah.
Just put it into one of the requirements.
We have seven requirements.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you. Ryan, thanks for the explanation. It's kind of self-evident, just on the first part being more of a preamble than part of the policy. I don't know if it's, if I'm just being too literal, if there's a way to spell that out, you know, almost on top of that. Because when you're just reading it through, it's sort of a back end to the policy itself.
Well, you can tell a lawyer wrote 90% of this.
Right.
There were some sentences I had to read three times, like what does this sentence say? There's so many commas.
I'm just used to seeing a policy at the top state specifically what it's about and what the intent is. And I know it does that lower, if there's some way to designate that.
So a heading.
Oh, good.
You're just saying like a heading to kind of describe.
Right, right.
What if they just took the second paragraph and put it at the front?
I feel like that's still part of an explanation. You know, it's almost like, I'm trying to think of the disclaimers to put it at the top. Here's a, you know, these are the terms and whatever guidelines used to describe that type of thing. It's getting specific. I did have a couple of questions about it. I didn't see psychiatrists listed under there as one of the healthcare providers. Sometimes that's controlled, but sometimes not.
No, I mean, that was one thought that I had reading through it, that when you have the list there, like really, it should just be any licensed, any provider licensed to prescribe.
Can't even a chiropractor provide like muscle relaxers or something?
Right. Did the lawyers come in and specify, we need to spell out all of the people, all of the rules?
To be honest, the attorney added a lot to it, and so I can't remember that if Parda came from us and she added more, or if she added all of them to it.
Sure.
So, yeah, I mean, we can seek feedback on that if we can be more general and then do kind of, you know, kind of, sometimes we do the like examples would be, but not necessarily limited to.
Anyone who's legally allowed to give you a prescription, we should accept it. Like, I don't want to exclude from somebody who is legally allowed to write you a prescription.
A licensed prescriber.
A licensed.
You could with any of it, and, you know, comma advanced practice nurse prescriber who is licensed in any state, and any other, you know, medical provider who has a license in Wisconsin, you know, like just to catch up.
All right. I do think if we're going to list it out, psychiatrists probably should be on this.
Oh, yeah. That's going to be the.
Yeah.
And I do think, and I'm just trying to think of with my, the background that I have, I do think Adam is right that I can't think of a medicine that necessarily a psychiatrist would describe that wouldn't be controlled. But I get that it should be.
There's a few.
Oh, yeah, there are plenty.
Oh, good.
Diet meds and stuff that aren't.
Perfect, great.
Prescribed but not controlled.
Yeah, prescribed, not controlled. All right, good.
And I don't know if this policy is the right place for it, but I was going through some of the, you know, the listings underneath and thinking about, you know, I know we don't have control over students sharing items off-campus, but could we write in possession of on-campus of other, you know, prescription drugs or whatever else that don't belong to them?
Can you remind me where that was?
It's not in there per se. This is, there's, I'm trying to think of which number it is, that just kind of made me think a little bit about examples.
Like no student should be in possession of any drug unless it's prescribed for them.
Yeah, not permitted to share, provide, you know, distribute. But it's all about in-school, on-school grounds, any school-sponsored activity or of that. And I know that's because we don't have control over what happens off-campus, but I was just thinking like, if it is exchanged off-campus and they show up with it.
I'm hearing you say maybe put in an additional sentence right where the cursor's at to say.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know that it falls into this policy or if that's under a separate policy, but basically like possession of substances that aren't prescribed substances.
Somewhere in there, it says it has to be in the bottle that, like the original bottle. And I think that kind of covers it, because if they show up with Adderall in a baggie, it's now not.
I was trying to think of like specific.
But yeah, right. I think also just spell it out as a.
Yeah.
And I do know, and there is policies about, and maybe I'm trying to find.
Okay, we do have like a drug and alcohol policy.
We do have a drug and alcohol policy, and I wonder if it's in, we get into the more specifics of that.
Yeah, that's just a cross-reference.
Could be a cross-reference.
Share, provide, or just add possess to that list, can you?
Student, nothing but the kid possessed.
They can possess. It's really, we're targeting about another student that's possessing something they should.
Possessions of not intended for.
Yeah.
Well, that everyone will be prescription. Let us think about that. If you have something, if you're okay with that, I'm just going to save that into this for now, and so then we can have the discussion.
Yeah, I was going to the other policies, too.
Yeah, and it might just be as simple as, it's like it's its own line. Are you done with your list?
I just had one more.
Okay. You can go, and then I have another, I have one.
Okay, good.
I didn't get into that part yet.
There's kind of something here.
I jumped the gun.
Number five made me think of this, of the mention of CBD products. And I couldn't remember where Delta-Aid stands in terms of local ordinance, state ordinance, that type of thing. Locally, I believe they are signing, okay? Because I was a gal, I remember.
Yes, it was, it was fixed, I think, last.
Yeah, they pretty much have fixed it, the municipal code.
And we put that into student possession, use of, oh, no, we put that in the student in other drug.
Okay.
Went to, so is the city, I know, is the city updated, we updated.
Got it.
It does seem weird that number five is, like number five just doesn't quite seem to fit with the rest of the policy.
Would it be because CBD is potentially occasionally used for medical purposes?
Yeah, I don't, I guess that's my, I guess that's my question, hence why is it in here? Like, is there, is that the reason?
CBD is not eligible for people younger than 18, maybe? I could be wrong about that, but it's like alcohol, right? You can't have alcohol either.
Right.
So just take it out, are you suggesting, or?
Yeah, I just, I don't know that.
Just a list.
Well, that should be more under the drug and alcohol.
Yeah, if we have a drug and alcohol policy that lists substances that aren't allowed for that reason, that seems like it would make more sense to go in there.
My one question is, and I don't, because I don't know the answer, is that are there, is there a case where somebody who is allowed to prescribe, could prescribe somebody CBD at a, younger than 18?
I didn't, also it lists CBD in the, in the four above, so I'm not sure that it needs to.
Well, if it's needed, I. Put this on over the, over the calendar, if they.
Hinge-derived CBD is legal for Wisconsin residents without age limits.
Hinge-derived, good.
So, well, that thing's up, yeah.
So then what's the, what's the?
As long as it's by someone who's licensed to grow it and sell it.
But how does that impact villages? Why would the village then be able to issue citations based upon what you've issued?
CBD is different from different Delta-Aid.
That's Delta-Aid.
Yeah, because.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe this is talking about Delta-Aid specifically.
Being Delta-Aid's more of a synthetic THC.
Yeah. I think based on that information, they'll probably want to leave it in because it's, it wouldn't necessarily be prescribed, but it could be an orally counter herbal supplement.
I mean, it doesn't hurt to leave it in.
Yeah.
Why don't I check with you?
I think it's fine to leave it in, I just, as long as there's like a reason, like a rational reason to leave it in, it just, it just struck me as not sitting in with the rest of your training.
That's the thing, I think about that one form, because I have no idea how all this is.
No idea. Leah, did you?
Yeah, if you scroll up to the top, and I know what it says, I know what it's trying to say, but I can't get a vision out of my head. So the second paragraph said, "The administration of medications to a student during school hours shall be given in a school setting, including extracurricular events and trips." So if they're on a field trip, I know it's a school setting, but in my head, I picture them like having to go to the school in the town where, and then having to like give them medication there. And I just don't know why is that, is that school setting like stuck in anybody else's brain, or is it just me? And if it's just me, then I, I don't care. But I had to read that like four times to go, if they're on a school, if they're, if they're at a soccer game, somebody needs meds, do they have to walk them into the locker room of the school to give it to them so they're in the school setting?
I took it as like, the school setting is the soccer game as an entirety. So like, where the school is hosting the event. So that would be, we're hosting prom, even if it's at, you know, let's say the Align Energy Center, or you know, something that's still school, that's the school setting because the school is hosting it. So that's whether you're at a soccer game, whether that's if you're on the, you know, egg field trip, that's if you're on the, you know, foods field trip, like it's anywhere.
Would it just clarify to say, given in the school setting, or given in a school setting or event, or school event?
I mean, that's what it says, but my brain could not, if it's just me, it is totally okay. But I read it like three times and go, I don't understand how this works.
It's just you.
Is it just me? And you can talk into it, because sometimes I get hung up on these policies and then I can't un-envision.
I understand what you're saying, but I didn't think that. I thought school setting, like meaning like wherever a school happened to be taking.
Perfect, I just didn't know where, me, it's just me. I, there are a couple sentences like that I just read like three times and figured it just had to be me. There's another one with so many commas in it that I was like, I don't know what we're saying. After the fourth read, I was like, wait, I got it now.
One question on that graph, based on the example of a soccer game, during school hours, does that run counter to the, in a school setting, depending on when that might occur? Thinking about field tri- you know, we, we have some pretty elaborate field trips that are...
Right.
All hours, yeah.
I would even see striking during the school hours.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Maybe that's where my brain was just like, I can't get past it.
Should be given as if in a school setting.
Well, now that we have a school setting, does it seem more like it has to be a school? Or, I don't know. Or is it while, shall we give it while in a, in studying or event?
Why don't we say, "The administration of medication to a student shall be given while the student is involved in a school event." A school-sponsored event or activity.
There you go.
See, wasn't just me.
No, it was just you, but this is all for you, so.
Actually, it should be.
Including Mr. Curricula, so. Maybe for one more read?
Yeah, that'd be okay.
Yeah. That's great. Would, would there be any consideration of women in, women needed to nine through twelve to start with for like a year, like a soft rollout, instead of going all the way to six, I don't know?
Yeah, I don't know, the, the school nurses put in the six, but we could, maybe that's something I can talk to them about and then bring it back.
My kids are really young, so I think relying on what you guys...
I would love it to stay six through twelve, because once, I mean, my kids, I mean, it could just be my kids, cause there's a varying age range, but like, they're already at home going in, if they need Tylenol, going to get Tylenol, like, now my eight-year-old takes his daily med every day by himself, unless he can't break in half, then he...
I think I would agree, like, by that time, they're pretty, and if, if, you know, because different kids, different maturity levels, if their parent doesn't feel like they can self-medicate themselves, then they wouldn't sign off on it, but there are some who are...
And they're also doing sport, well, that's mostly my seventh grade, but they're doing sports and after-school activities and be able to like throw that Tylenol in because you're, you know, sore from basketball or whatever.
The only wonder about a compromise on that, if we want to, is that we do, if you do look under the student self-administration section, we do have a one-two, so one is for, uh, over-the-counter, where it states six-twelve, and the second one is for prescription meds, if you change that one to nine-twelve, but leave over-the-counter six-twelve.
I think that's gonna be...
To confuse you.
Yeah.
Just make one of them.
Alright.
It might, might be.
Yeah, just do it all, alright.
What do you do for kids that are in like elementary that have inhalers?
Those would be emergency medications, and that's a different policy.
That's what I, I was like, I feel like we talked about this, but then I couldn't.
Yep, so we have an emergency med policy, and then that's where those would be, and then that's where Stephen said we'll review it at SOT, or our next meeting to also add in the Narcan.
Why wouldn't EpiPen be involved in that?
It would probably be in there as well.
All smelling salts.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Brian.
Great, we'll clean it up and bring it back.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Seven C, consideration of participation in the Greater Dane County School District Consortium. So, you all have heard Dr. Slano and I talk about this twice, we've gone to two different meetings. Both times I thought were really productive and useful, I think it's a really thoughtful group of, not just all the school districts that are there, but the, some of the people, who are helping to initiate and plan it. I think, in my opinion, it is a good opportunity to learn alongside some of our peer districts and learn from some of our peer districts. I also really appreciated at the last one that Brian and I went to, you know, there's always an opportunity for districts to share out or some sort of, you know, icebreaker kind of thing, and I was kinda taking, I was like, hmm, maybe lean down that school board and ask her like how she does this thing or that thing, you know, I just think it's a good opportunity to, I, I don't know about you all, but you know, like, we have a chance to talk, but you know, minus the state ed convention, or if you happen to know somebody who's on a school board in a different district, it's not necessarily like, there's not a whole lot of opportunities to meet those folks. A lot of thought went into what the purpose should be. I don't think that there is any interest in driving agenda that doesn't meet everybody's needs, I think that's really focused on finding what the common ground is and how to improve things. And as it says, Greater Dane County, I wrote down a list just so you would all know, it, you know, the districts within Dane County are, you know, discussing at their board meetings whether or not to join, and then some of the additional districts are Nuglaris, South Prairie, Columbus, I think there might be Edgerton, so there's still districts that are, you know, within our area. I don't know if you all have questions or thoughts about it.
I think your first order business needs a better acronym.
Oh, the acronym.
You can even pronounce it.
I know, I know, I was, I read that, I was like, is there a need for an acronym? I don't know who's gonna use that.
The only thing I would say is, I think you're right in terms of being able to bounce ideas, all that kind of stuff, as long as we can maintain the Mount Ork voice.
Oh.
That's really the only concern I have anytime joining a group like this is, does it get loud enough to drown out the individual school voice? So, that would be the only caution I would have, as I'm thinking about it. I don't, I don't think that's gonna be the case.
Sure, but it's a good...
Over time, I think we need to keep an eye on that as a board.
And is the Madison School District, I assume, part of it?
Yep, they've been at this meeting previously.
The costs are very reasonable, but I'm just curious about what the money goes to.
What, I think it's possibly gonna be five hundred dollars, and the money would go towards any like costs associated with hosting the meeting, bringing in a speaker if we decided like, cause part of it is gonna be ongoing learning opportunities, so I think it's just meeting-specific, like in terms of materials and resources, that kind of thing.
So we wouldn't be on the hook for hosting it, that kind of covers everything, which is nice.
Yes, because I think the hope is also...
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I think the hope is also that everyone, I mean, it would take a while, since there's only three meetings per year, but they continue to rotate through the districts, but then, you know, not having a financial burden allows everybody to host.
That's cool.
So, tell me about the governance of this group. Is, I'm assuming there's a chair elected, there's, can be, tell, tell me what that looks like.
So far, there's a planning committee, which Dr. Slano sits on beyond that, we don't have any sort of elected officials. I think this kind of came about organically, out of a desire to come together. So, there's Middleton and South Prairie, and then Nuglaris, and you were, you were asked to join. I don't know if going forward that would be something more formal than that. I would say that, you know, as we've been like, again, we only had two meetings, there's been discussions amongst the whole group, like what's our function, what's our purpose, what is gonna be our priority in terms of goals and how we spend our time. So, you may be able to speak more to...
I think you did a very nice job, thanks, Jessica. I do think that if the district wanted to take an off-ramp on a topic that just wasn't meeting our needs, that wouldn't be seen as being problematic. To your point, we do need to be thinking about Mount Ork first, but to the extent to which we can leverage our voice around advocacy for school funding and the like, I think it's a lot stronger when you've got sixteen-plus school districts doing that, and have the media market be right here in Madison is really powerful too, with our legislators.
So like, who holds the money, the rights, like, do they have their own bank account?
They have, they have...
Harry offered to be the fiscal agent, it's sort of like when, you know, we have, you know, joint grants and somebody just says, okay, I'll do it.
So, do we have like an MOU type of situation where we sign like we do with the other consortiums?
Yeah, there likely will be at some point maybe some kind of agreement, constitution might be too strong a word, but some kind of system that just kinda talks about, but we really are at infancy, and so that's the beauty of being a part of this, right, is that we can help build it to meet the needs of the participants. And rest assured, if we elected to move forward, we would continue to keep the board apprised of what's happening. And of course, I hope that your schedule may allow you to join us on any one of the three dates that are listed there, but most especially on the fifteenth of January. We would love to have you.
I'm all for it, it just seems weird that we're just gonna write a check to like South Prairie and we don't really have a, like a, okay, so then we host and we have all these snacks, and then like, how do we get those reimbursed?
I'm guessing all that's gonna be spelled out, like, the intent was that like, the districts who are interested in joining talk about it with their boards, and, I mean, like, at our last meeting, we were voting on, you know, like a logo, like, I mean, it really is just sort of forming, so all that kind of stuff, I think, will be...
How many meetings have you guys had, just to... So, is our vote tonight to show our interest, or is it to write a five hundred dollar check?
I would say it's both, but if there was a reason to do it differently.
I, I guess I'm kinda with Leah, I'd just like to see a little bit more before I say we're gonna start committing community resources to this.
More related to what?
Just a little bit better spell now. I understand the mission, I get it, that's great, but there's gotta be some sort of governance, there's gotta be some sort of, who's gonna write agendas, who's gonna, I mean, that kind of stuff?
Well, I think at this point the agendas are gonna be directed by the planning committee with input from the group as a whole, you know, I mean, that's the way it has operated so far.
Okay.
Yeah, what's nice about the planning committee, it really is a cross-section of school districts, so it's not just all the big districts, and then what about the little schools? They purposely reached out to us and said, hey, Mount Ork, please consider being a part of this, cause we're, we're much smaller fish in their big pond. I'm not, I'm, knowing the people as I do, I, I'm not worried about that, but I can appreciate why you might feel as you do, in terms of money and, and all. South Prairie's folks are audited just like ours are, and...
No, I'm not worried about them as the fiscal agents, at all. It's just, it's just understanding, you know, we're gonna spend five hundred dollars, so I wanna make sure it's truly directed.
How was the, how was that amount determined, the five hundred dollars?
Yeah, they were talking about what it costs to host a meeting for food, dinner, literally, it's nice fellowship in the beginning, from five-thirty to about six, it's a meal. And so when you're feeding, you know, fifty, sixty people three times a year, it's felt like five hundred dollars might be an appropriate amount. Some secretarial time for the fiscal agent to handle those kinds of things. In terms of a budget, it's, five hundred dollars is a lot of money, don't get me wrong, but it's not in terms of being part of a consortium, that's not unreasonable. In fact, we've got a number of organizations that we commit to and participate in, ADF is one of them, that they're raising their figure by three hundred and fifty dollars this year, so I don't know how much sooner we're going to get any kind of information from this group that plans, but I certainly can put it on the radar and ask them to put, to see if they'd be willing to put something together. I just hope that that wouldn't preclude us from participating.
I don't wanna strain that mass, that's not what I'm trying to do, but I, cause it's five hundred dollars, so.
No, but it's money, it's important.
I appreciate you being...
And do we need to make a motion like not to exceed, cause I, didn't your, your weekly update, I thought said maybe a thousand?
I put down a thousand because I was writing it on vacation, I didn't handle the file with me.
Big vacation spender over there.
But I do, I do think it was five hundred dollars, I just didn't wanna say it and be wrong, so I kinda came up with...
I just said also, I did read the weekly updates, so I...
At seven-fifty, I'm out.
I know that everybody has extensive time commitments, but I think that if you attended any of these, your, any concerns you have, I think would be eliminated, you know, not just about the money, but just a lot, the way it's, I mean, it's very well organized, it's very responsive, it just, it, it, it's just, it's a good group, and it feels like a good opportunity when you're there and you're talking with these people that like, oh, this could actually be really productive.
So does a tattoo parlor at two in the morning.
Yes, but like, for those of us who have lots of meetings to go to, like, you go there and you're not like, oh, this is just another meeting, like, they're like, oh, this is a good use of my time, like, this could be productive.
Likes to be. Exactly, no, I, it's, yeah, it's not the money, it's the organization part, so I'm not meant, so obviously we have to rely on what you're gonna say.
Is this presented then as sort of a one-year annual recurring commitment?
Okay.
Yeah. That's exciting.
Other comments or questions?
I just, I think it's really important for us to participate, we're, we're all trying to do the same thing, and it feels like in a vacuum sometimes, and I'll just help us break out of it.
What time-ish are the meetings normally at?
I think that, Dr. Slano, just five-thirty, that's how...
Is that what it was?
Five-thirty supper, and then six PM's the meeting, and we're definitely done by eight-thirty, which is even better, right? It's not a long, long night, allows you to do other things.
I like the timing of this getting started before the next budget, before the next state superintendent, there's so many things that are on the horizon that as a group that we could try to help advocate for and speak out for.
So, in between the meetings, so we've got three meetings a year, is there gonna be any, do you foresee that we're gonna be able to have a lot of communication with these other groups, I mean, in between times if something comes up?
I think that was part of the whole, like, you know, yeah, I mean, not necessarily just sake of just communicating, but like, if, to your point, like, if something came up and they were like, ooh, we should respond, let's, you know, work together to do that. Yes, definitely. Any other questions or comments?
Just to, maybe a reminder again on what would be most valuable for you tonight, any action taken tonight?
I would, I would like us to see us approve, you know, that we say yes, that we would like to be a part of this group.
If I can build on your thoughtful comment to say, we're seeking a motion that would permit the Mount Orkberry School District to participate in the GDC SDC. And allow payment to the organization not to exceed five hundred dollars for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
So moved.
I second.
I'm not gonna say it again, GDC. I typed it once and then, and then copied and pasted it into the calendar the next time, so I'm typing that out so many times.
Do you wanna make this contention to us?
Awesome acronym. I can't put that in the calendar, Mickey'll go, where are you going? I was like, I don't know, it's some meeting that I, with other schools with an acronym that's, it's too long.
Motion by Ava, signed by Sarah, to join the Greater Dane County School District Consortium. Is there any further discussion?
Would that include the not to exceed?
Yes, yep, yes. All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Moving on, any citizen comments? Future agenda items, is there anything that you would like to discuss, these are me or Dr. Slano know? And then moving on to our schedule of next meetings, July fifteenth is our next board meeting, two board members have already indicated that they will be out of town, is anyone else thinking about that? Look, if anything changes, please let us know right away. Any other things to go for highlight?
Just a friendly reminder about the finance committee meeting, not meeting next week, but rather on the twenty-third, and a thought, can't talk about it tonight because it's not noticed, but just one that I'd like for you to just kinda put on your radar. This has seemed to be a very successful time for us to start our meeting, six PM, and it allows for us to get through a lot of work before too long. And we've just been having some conversations as a senior leadership team, and briefly with, with Jessica about the potential of seeing if we couldn't try to do six PM meetings more often with some of our committee work to be done at five fifteen, five-thirty, maybe even five PM where appropriate, so just a consideration, we think it makes... So just a consideration, we think it makes for a good evening when we're still fresh and able to have conversations while at the same time not keeping us too late into the night. Would we put this on future?
Yeah. I think, or, yeah, we can definitely put on the future note, but just if people have board conflicts, that'd make it not possible.
And we can always be flexible.
It's not. It was worth discussing, discussing, but you know, like, yeah.
We would never want you to have to do anything to keep you from work, of course. We can do.
I wouldn't want to do things.
Thank you so much.
Alrighty. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Sarah.
I was trying to get someone else.
All those in favor of adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.